Great. Good evening. The Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, July 11th, 7/11 day. I hope you had your free Slurpee today. Is coming to order. Very exciting meeting tonight because we're going to be talking about the master plan tonight and we have quite a few folks here to talk about it. But let me give you a little bit of background of the process that we're going to go through tonight. Over the last month and a half, there was a committee, subcommittee, select committee of several members of the Board of Selectmen. I think Selectmen Colagero is here and Rosemary Smedele, Eric Afori, the head of Community Development, myself, and a former member of the Planning Board, Lydva Dickey, with the help of Gene. We are soliciting participation in the Master Plan Advisory Committee to help form the master plan. And we had a series of interviews with quite a few people and really some dynamite discussions. I, speaking personally, very much enjoyed the discussions. And as a result of that, we've nominated nine individuals to be on this Master Plan Advisory Committee. And what I'd like to do, several of them are here, some of them are not, I'd like to read off all the names. We have to vote on it, so that's why I wanted to do that. But I wanted to mention the names and if folks could just stand up, that would be great. So let me just read off the names. Scott Hammond, Norma Lockman, I think Norma's here, Christina Minicucci, Diane O'Connor, Gary Seidel, Erin Stevens, David Stroh, John Waters, and Tom Zarico. So, thank you all. We appreciate it. And so, I didn't know if anybody had any, wanted to ask any questions about the process. Eric and Phil and myself are all here, so we can answer any questions if anybody did have a question.
Could you tell me, maybe just a little bit about how the interviews took place and what you were looking for in forming the panel, you know, in terms of backgrounds and experience and things that are being brought to the table?
Eric, could you, could you do the honors?
Sure. So we, over a two afternoon-night period, we were able to get, I think, a little over 20 people in. And they were really just, weren't interviews, they were kind of 15, 20-minute conversations so we could get a sense of what their perspective were, is, on the town, as well as some of their background and what they could bring to the table. And I think, Phil would join, correct me, when we came up with this recommendation, we were looking for a well-balanced, it kind of covered people that, one, were energetic about it, that was key. Two, were creative in their discussion with us and the feedback, open to ideas, understanding the process is really about the public and getting public input and less about us as individuals or even collectively as a committee. And I think it was a well-balanced, you know, from different parts of the town, different sectors. And that was pretty much it. You know, I think it was just a feel that they would also work well together and work well with this board and the consultant team and staff. And, you know, I could, on a personal level, very pleased with, I think, the, first of all, the people, all of them that we talked about, I'm pleased the people stepped forward. But the nine individuals provided to you tonight, very pleased with that. I don't know, Phil, if you wanted to add anything to that?
Phil DiColigio, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I actually, the only thing I'd really want to add is this process was not something that the Board of Selectmen had to actually be included in. And so, this was more an opportunity just to thank the Planning Board for expanding the opportunity for the Board of Selectmen and members of the Planning Board to work together. It's my third year on the board and this was the first time we got a chance to work around a table. And I think that we're better for it because, though there were six people in the room right here, Eric already said there were 24 really talented people that we interviewed. And I think my favorite question was that John would break the ice in the meeting by asking what they'd want to change, if they could change one thing. And it wasn't ever a bad conversation, but it got the ball rolling in 24 unique directions and I think really got us thinking about what opportunities exist. What I find exciting is that quite a fair number of these people are not lifelong residents of town. And so, we really were able to ask them what attracted them here. And that adds a whole different type of perspective that I'm personally excited about because there was something that drew them here. And I think that gives them that, that ability to help draw new and more families here and to keep those families that are already here, here. So, thank you. And I just want to do a quick plug and say thank you. I know we have three people sitting around the table this evening for the first time. It takes a lot of work and so I'm very grateful that you're willing to serve. So, thank you to the three new members for joining us as volunteers. So, that's all. Thanks.
Can I just add one more question? I was wondering if somebody, a part of the process, could speak just to the, just the, I guess, the experience of people that have been selected. What, you know, just briefly, different backgrounds?
Well, we, a good question. I mean, what we wanted to do was, obviously, we didn't want nine of the same person. So we wanted a diversity of backgrounds. Phil alluded to the fact that we have a few lifelong residents of North Andover. Mr. Zarico is a lifelong resident of the town. And we have, I think, several members who've only lived here two or three years or even less. You can see by the group of people, we have all ages. People's backgrounds are different. We did want to have at least one or two people with real estate backgrounds, which we do, but we have people with totally diverse backgrounds. So I think it's a very broad spectrum of people that we had. And I think also we're looking for people who will collaborate. You know, one of the things that we want more than anything else from this group to do is to very broadly solicit opinion of people from the town in terms of getting people's responses. They could be, you know, going to the senior center or seniors that don't go to the senior center. It could be people in schools. It could be all different demographics, but we want to solicit that view. And we think we have a great group that is going to go out and do that and bring a lot of different perspectives. And I think, like, the question, the icebreaker question that we asked, some of the answers we got back were phenomenal answers off of the spur of the moment. So I think we got some good creative thinkers here. So I'm really excited.
I'm glad that there seemed to be an effort to grab those newer residents because being here only five years, I'm still integrating myself into the community. So, so to have that experience on the board, this is, this planning board, I think is a great thing to guide where we go for the next five or 10 years.
Good. With any other?
I'd just like to thank everybody for being willing to participate in such an important contribution to the town. I've read previous master plans and was really impressed with the amount of commitment and effort that went into it. It's a great cause, so thank you very much for being willing to do that.
So before we are going, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the nominations of the committee for the Master Plan Advisory Committee?
I'll make a motion to accept the nominations for the committee for the Master Plan Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Great. So, Gene, I'll defer to you in terms of the process of the kickoff. And I think from my perspective, the three things that I'd like to get out of this are to have clarity on the roles and responsibilities of the Advisory Committee versus the Planning Board versus your role and versus our consultant, the rough schedule and timeframe, and the whole interaction model, how we're going to communicate and work together, so.
So, first of all, everybody does have what we anticipate to be the project schedule in front of them. And Eric is here from the outside consultant firm, RKG, which you met several meetings ago, I believe, some of the representatives from the consultant firm. We did have some discussions. So I think before getting into the detail of the schedule, we should talk about the relationship of the Advisory Committee, the Planning Board, the consultants. I myself can say that I'm going to act as a liaison between all of them and I am totally open to any communication or facilitating the process, but not an active participant in terms of the committee itself, but a supportive role for, for all three entities. So the consultants yourself, as well as the Advisory Committee. So can you speak to the relationship, RKG, and the primary role in terms of working with the committee versus the board? And then at milestones, the updates to the board itself?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Glad to be in front of you and officially, I think, we've unofficially kicked off the project, but now officially kicked it off and have a committee to work with, which is great. So in the past, we've, we've had this through other master plans where we've had a working group or an advisory committee or a steering committee for a master plan or other projects that have sort of funneled down through the Planning Board. And usually, the way that we do it is we run almost all of our communications through the staff members, so Gene, and also to Eric, who would then try to funnel it up to the right people. But in terms of our interaction throughout the majority of the process, it'll most often be with the working group. And I say that because sometimes, I'm sure you all have a pretty full agenda a lot of times, and we'll need, when we meet with them once every month or every other month or how often we decide to meet, we really need dedicated time to sit down with the working group and really hash through things and be able to say, this is what we're seeing in terms of existing conditions under this master plan chapter. Does this make sense to you? Are we headed in the right direction? So having those sort of on-the-ground working meetings with the committee is really, really important. So I think we'll most often meet with them and they will be the committee that's sort of steering us along the way. As I mentioned to Gene the other day when we were talking, the interaction, I think, with the Planning Board is also really important since at the end of the day, the Planning Board is going to be making decisions on the master plan. Especially at the end of the process. And we want you to be informed as we move through. So there are a couple of major milestones and we can walk through that as we go through the schedule. But I would be completely open to coming to the Planning Board meeting at some of those milestones and providing an update. And that would also allow you the opportunity to make comments to the consulting team about the documents that we're producing along the way. Or if you think we should be steering it in a little bit different direction, we can talk about that and, you know, sort of how that jives, it doesn't jive with what we're hearing from the public and from the working group and from staff.
And that being said, very early in the process, we talked about maybe some ex officio members of the Planning Board wanting to participate at a different level. In fact, you're all ex officio members. I mean, you all have valuable experience and insight and input into this process. It's welcome at any point in time. So if there's a particular meeting going on that you have strong interest in and we're going to be doing public outreach or whatnot, you know, participation in that group arena is, is welcomed.
Gene, are the meetings with the consultant and the committee, are they considered open meetings?
I would say so. Yes.
And where are those meetings held?
This is the kickoff meeting. So they haven't been scheduled. There will be some public outreach and so those could be throughout town.
Right.
But those will all be noticed and put on the meeting calendar with agendas. There will be other meetings that I trust you guys are going to schedule independently to start assigning tasks and workloads. I would also, I would probably post those all as public meetings. Public could be welcome and it might be just in listening format. But again, as ex officio members, I wouldn't say that, you know, if it's of strong interest and you wanted to attend a meeting, you could attend as.
And roughly, how often will the consultant meet with the committee?
I would say in the beginning, it will probably be a little bit more often as we're getting off the ground. And then I think as we go along through the process, it may be, maybe every other month. But I think it will depend a little bit on the schedule, how the schedule's set up and how we progress through.
Okay.
Because we want to make sure that we're meeting with them often enough to get good direction on the deliverables for the master plan.
And so, a little background, we've already had some kickoff meetings internally with staff. So we had all department heads and division directors in a meeting for a kickoff meeting. And then we took RKG on a town tour and really covered a broad scope of facilities that the town owns, as well as housing choices and commercial areas and things like that. So we did all that. Today, we actually took a little bit of a core assessment for facilities themselves. So we had DPW, the library director, Stevens Estate was covered. So there's those things going on as well. And they're really to kind of map existing conditions so that as we start to be, again, with public and the Advisory Committee, they have some of that data before them that they can start to move forward on.
So, Gene, will you sort of keep us apprised as a board of when these meetings are even up just on a high level so that we have a general idea of how things are progressing in between the updates that we're getting?
Anything like that that you feel will help you stay in the loop? And if it's not tonight that you think of it, shoot me an email.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Gene, I know below it's separate to some degree. Could you very briefly talk about what you're doing with the Mary Magge Valley Planning Commission on Housing?
That's next on the agenda. So do you want to jump to that?
Yeah, just if you could wrap that in as part of this.
Yep. It's definitely an arm of the master plan, kind of being handled on a different route. But, so as again, they came and presented to you that it's a regional plan, but there's certainly a local community impact to it. So one of the chapters is going to be for the town of North Andover. On June 27th, we held the first local community needs workshop. It was actually very well-represented from boards and commissions, so we solicited a stakeholder from as many boards as we could. The Affordable Housing Trust had two representatives, the CPC committee had one, Council on Aging, Council on Disability, the Housing Authority, Board of Health, two of the Board of Selectmen, the Stevens Library, and a zoning Board of Appeals representative. So I thought that was a pretty good dynamic in terms of kind of like the interests that they're serving on was represented. And I also reached out to developers, realtors, Edgewood, to try to get that perspective in the room as well. And MINTCO did send a representative, RCG sent someone, Tom Carroll from Remax, so he does a lot of real estate for years here, Bob Coppola from Edgewood, RKG was present, and two residents that had an interest in disability housing were there as well. So, pretty good mix. At the meeting, for the most part, it was kind of data presentation of existing demographics, population breakdown, projections of population, housing types, household size, household unit types, the SHI inventory for 2017, incomes, that type of data was presented. And then it was really just turning it over to the floor to say, just off the cuff, what do you see as our needs in town? And a lot of it was probably as expected because they were there as stakeholders with a particular interest. So, most commonly stated was affordable starter homes and affordable downsizing type homes or step-down homes. And what we realized is that that very likely could look like the very same house and in the very same geographic area towards downtown library area. 55-plus housing, housing for disabled adults with children, and housing for disabled children so that they can stay in a family home longer than they can today. Updated public housing and additional public housing units. And then, at this forum, multifamily units that can offer a live, work, and play type atmosphere in our downtown. So I think that you see a little bit of a generational shift there, where more density down here, but where we can live, work, and play type density.
Is it possible that you can summarize sort of the takeaways from that meeting, you know, in a page or two?
Yep.
Distribute? Because I think that might be the most useful thing, then we'll have that for the future.
Okay. Yeah. I'll give you these notes. What I found interesting after that night, so we're also using some social media, the Co-Urbana site, I don't know if anybody has gone on and checked that out, but you can actually just post ideas to that. And so that type of representative comment was very common on, on the North Andover comments entered on social media. Then I took the flyer and kind of asked the question and we put it on the Town News, which goes to both Twitter and our Facebook page. And I also asked for it to be posted at Facebook and the library, the senior center. And it's just a question, what do you think the housing needs are? And you could send a text in. And it went straight to the Co-Urbana site. And again, we got the affordable 55-plus, more two families where people can start to have other family members with them as opposed to assisted live-in type environment, more starter homes, single-family homes, multiple entries for that. But then there were also comments kind of countering that with less development, no more homes, less multiple-family units, less apartments, condos, single-family homes, not only that, but 3,000 square feet in larger single-family homes. So I think by opening it up to that demographic as opposed to who attended the meeting, there was a different response. And I'm not saying good or bad response, but it definitely was different than what we're hearing at the meeting itself. So with that being said, we now need to collect more data to see kind of what's leading to these type of responses. I anticipate doing an online survey with, you know, much more targeted than that one, what's the housing needs, but really kind of drill down into some backgrounds and where that comment's coming from. And then we've targeted October for the second workshop to start talking about goals and strategies and what's coming out of the input we get from the public. But I can certainly put this in memo format and get it to the board.
I think some of the, one of the thoughts from a process perspective, the social media might be helpful to the Advisory Committee in terms of the things that they're doing because if we can, for everything we do, have an awful lot of social media feedback, that, that might really help us get a broader spectrum of news.
So the survey questions I solicited, I actually contacted Eric and said, what are the typical questions that you ask during a master plan process? So the survey's really coming from that arm of this effort. And then, once we get that, we'll certainly get the data to these, to this committee as well. So, any thoughts on this process and the others?
I guess I would just mention, in case you were wondering, or maybe you already know, but through Gene, we've been closely coordinating with the Planning Commission too, so to make sure that there's not a lot of overlap or duplication of effort. So they've done a lot of upfront data collection prior to our process actually starting. So they're, they're going to share a lot of their upfront data with us, which is great. And then we'll supplement with data, at least on the housing side of things, that we would typically put into a master plan chapter. As Gene mentions, myself and another gentleman from RKG attended the meeting and we're continuing to coordinate with them on that.
Do you, do you want to get into the, what do you want to do next?
I think, go to the schedule itself.
Yeah, the schedule, okay.
So.
Sure. So this is just a quick project schedule that we put together so everyone was kind of on the same page. So you'll see up at the top, so actually, one thing I should probably mention beforehand, which you're probably well aware of, but I'll mention anyway, so there's sort of two simultaneous processes going on, basically at the same time. There's the master plan, but there's also the zoning work that's going on. So what you'll see on the schedule, the sort of blue-colored boxes represent timeframes and deliverables that are related to the master plan effort. The sort of light red, pinkish color are what's going on in terms of the zoning update. The way that we've tried to schedule these too is that so, there's sort of be a feedback loop. So we'll do some of the master plan, for example, we'll do the existing conditions, as you could see, basically running from May until September timeframe is when we're collecting all the existing conditions data and formulating the existing conditions chapters for each of the different master plan elements. We're going to take a quick pause there and our sub-consultant, Judy Barrett from Barry Barrett Planning, is going to be working basically from July through September on the initial components of the zoning. So that would include zoning interviews, which I know she's working on scheduling with Gene and with Eric.
If I could interrupt. So by the end of this week, you should receive a calendar invite through Google Sheets where August 1st, we're planning from 10 to 8. Judy, to be available to meet, I think it's 50-minute blocks of time. You'll be able to just sign up through Google Sheets. There'll be five people per session. But that, that red X there is considered expert interviews and I'm going to, again, reach out to developers, engineers, people that we most frequently deal with and have developed in town, as well as staff and board members. It will go to this entire board as well as the zoning Board of Appeals.
And then, as Judy works her way through, the first sort of big deliverable on the zoning side is what we call the zoning diagnostic, which is essentially a report on the existing conditions of the zoning bylaw. So she goes through and she reads it cover to cover, basically pulls out inconsistencies, language that may be outdated, definitions that might be outdated, structural issues, organizational issues, and she creates a diagnostic document. So the reason why we have it scheduled sort of wrapping up in September is that what I'd like to do, since RKG's responsible for the land use element of the master plan and zoning is obviously a very critical element of the land use component of the master plan, I want to be able to take Judy's zoning diagnostic and loop that into our existing conditions chapter for land use so that there's at least some synergy and both of those documents are reflecting the data collection and the synthesis that's going on up through September. So over the next couple of months, that's just a quick snapshot of what we're working on. Gene mentioned what RKG likes to do as part of the kickoff to the master plan is to do what we call core assessment meetings. We had the first one today on the facilities and services chapter. Basically, we get a group of sort of local experts, board and committee members, town staff members, people who really know one of the particular subject areas of the master plan, you know, in more detail than we may get elsewhere or just by sitting in an office doing research in front of our desk. So we like to get out in the community and talk to people. So we do a core assessment meeting for each of the chapters of the master plan. So those red Xs happening in July and August, we're working now to sort of figure out who are the best people to reach out to and schedule those meetings over the next month and a half or so. And that will also directly feed into the existing conditions chapters. We also like to use those groups later on in the process when we come to the sort of strategies and recommendations component because they're familiar with us, they know what we're doing, they're also really familiar with the particular topic area. So we can, if they're amenable, most of the, most of the time they are, we'll go back to them and say, hey, here's some, some strategies around transportation, for instance, and we'll talk to DPW and maybe people from the Regional Planning Commission, the NPL, whoever is knowledgeable about transportation issues in North Andover. And we'll say, these are some strategies that we're coming out with, what do you think of these? So it's a way for us to kind of bookend those pieces of input and information. Any questions on the first couple of months?
Hey, one question. Do you do any effort to, with your existing conditions assessment, to look back at the prior master plan, which I realize was some time ago from my understanding, and recognize, try to determine what worked well, you know, what was followed through upon, what wasn't, that, that kind of scenario?
Absolutely. Yep. Absolutely. So we're also in the process of getting all the past reports, the master plan being one of the most important ones, but all the past reports and current reports for each of these different chapters. And Gene's been helping us corral all that data as well. Thank you. Okay. So the, the next phase is sort of, is phase two. It's kind of where, so phase one, sort of where is North Andover today? The second phase, where is North Andover going? So this would be the opportunity where we would engage the public in a much larger discussion about sort of the vision and goals for North Andover moving forward over the next 15 or 20 years. So we envision hopefully having the first public forum, large-scale public forum in October. And as soon as we have our initial meeting with the steering committee, I know Jen Goldson from our team, who's helping me with all the public engagement components of the master plan, really wants to engage the committee in a discussion about when can we schedule that meeting and how is it best to start working toward that meeting now? Because it does take quite a bit of planning. Obviously, the town would want to do quite a bit of outreach to the public to make sure that everyone's aware of the meeting ahead of time. Coming out of that meeting, the team would get together with the committee. We present sort of a draft vision and draft set of goals for each of the master plan chapters. And we would also, at the same time, coming out of that meeting, begin to start thinking about, you know, the projections that the town may have for growth across different chapters of the master plan. We'd also want to look back at the needs that came out of the existing conditions report and then some of the trends that may impact the town moving forward. We want to use that data, synthesize that to help formulate some of the recommendations that we would then come and present to the committee first. Probably makes sense to come to the Planning Board at that point as well. And then leading up to the discussion with the public in March, or in the early part of the spring, where we'd be presenting then what came out of that initial meeting around the vision and the goals and trying to focus in with the public on what some of those draft recommendations and draft strategies would be. That would be kind of the second big point of public input for the master plan process. And just quickly going back to the zoning piece, in the sort of middle to late part of the fall and in the winter into the new year, and Judy would be working on the preliminary outline of the zoning bylaw and working on what we call the first reading draft, which would really be the kind of first rough cut of the entire bylaws or reorganized and fixed up and sort of presented to, I'm assuming at this point, the Planning Board, or if there's going to be any kind of working group associated with the, with the zoning piece. And then really wrapping up the master plan in the spring and into the very early parts of the summer would be just developing the draft plan, which again, we would vet through the committee and staff, the Planning Board, and then eventually a final presentation to the Planning Board. And again, the zoning's on a little bit of a different schedule with the second and third reading drafts, the hearing draft, and the public adoption. We, this schedule sort of reflects it wrapping up in the fall, but I know we would have to extend that into a spring, the spring annual town meeting for actual, formal adoption. So, so it's a general, general overview of the schedule, some of the milestones. So it's a general overview of the schedule, some of the milestones.
Questions from the board? Any questions from the audience and the members of the committee?
I had one question. In terms of the plan going forward, I was curious as to what you see as the final result, is this going to be a resilient plan, something that if circumstances change during the course of following through the plan, that the town and the citizens of this town can change tack, so to speak, to adjust the plan going forward?
Well, it's easier said than done, in some respects, because it's a little bit difficult to predict the future when you're writing the plan now, but we do the best we can. One way that we've recommended in the past to help with that effort after the plan is actually adopted is for the community to think about a master plan implementation committee that would either be, could be a subset of the planning board, it could be its own standalone committee that maybe is represented by different boards and committees in town, as well as residents. And that could be the committee that sort of makes decisions on implementation priorities. So we will, we will put forth our own implementation priorities in coordination, working with the town. But as you all know, some things change over time. So having that committee in place is a really great way to make sure that the master plan remains a living document. We'll give you all the editable files and everything, so if there's ever a reason to go in and want to change the implementation table or change anything about the master plan, that committee's a really great kind of follow-on activity for towns to undertake. But we will do the best we can to try to make it flexible and provide options where we can, so that the town has different ways to go if certain circumstances change over time.
One of the things that I wanted to talk about now is, because we have everybody here, particularly the advisory committee, to some degree, you know, I would suggest that they have at least at the start, meetings of their own, where they self-organize and decide, you know, what they want to focus on, and then maybe come back to the planning board and talk about it. But can you talk a little bit about that, give sort of a recommendation of what you think is the best model and the best sort of direction to give the committee in terms of how it goes about and doing its work and contributes to the process?
I think one of my initial recommendations would be if the consultant team could meet with the committee as soon as possible. Those are the kind of questions that I actually have. How does the committee want to function? What role does the committee want to play? In addition to advising us, oftentimes the committee will play a pretty substantial role in helping us do the outreach for public meetings, helping us staff or facilitate discussions at those meetings. But at the same time, I also don't want to stifle creativity with the committee. So if there's opportunities that they see to further engage the public, or further get engaged in the development of deliverables, or research projects, or whatever it might be that they're interested in, we are totally open to that. But I would love to actually talk to the committee more about that and try to do that as soon as we can.
We were hoping to get some availability tonight, as in terms of how soon you guys can get a first meeting. August, early August is available enough, so we can regroup when we finish this and meet in the hall and try to get that.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, that's, you know, and I think it has to, even though it works in conjunction with what we're doing, it has its own independent life of its own, and you want to get going, so. Any questions from any of the members or comments? Good, great, well, I'm excited, this is great. I think we're going to, this is a good start, I think we got a lot of people, a lot of enthusiasm, and, you know, a lot of good ideas percolating around, so have a good time. Great, thank you, all, Jean, for putting all this stuff together. So you guys are caucus outside?
We're going to talk as soon as we can.
I don't know, is that an illegal meeting, or? Okay. To it, back to it. So, because of a scheduling conflict, I want to jump to Merrimack College one to the top. Rebecca, if you can give the board sort of an overview of what the discussion is going to be about, then we'll let the applicant talk about it.
So on April 18, 2017, the planning board approved a site plan review, special permit to allow upgrades to the athletic fields over at Merrimack College. Specifically, it would be a synthetic turf field, running track, viewing bleachers, a press box, a new field house, concessions, bathrooms, locker rooms, and a small event area. On June 5th, Felipe Schwartz with Merrimack College had approached me in regards to a change that they would like to make to the site plan that was approved. Specifically, the reason for that change was because of the plumbing code and the fact that they needed to provide more bathroom facilities than they had currently provided in their site plan. So their plan is to remove the 7,500-square-foot field house building that was originally proposed, that had the locker rooms, the event area, bathrooms, concession stands, and to replace that with a small shed-like structure for a ticket box, and then also then, towards the side of the grandstand, which I can pull up on the screen, place a 2,000-square-foot bathroom facility that would also have a ticket booth in it as well. So on the screen, you can see what they had originally proposed, the specific area in question is this area right here. That's the area that they were going to have. You can kind of see where there's the bathrooms, the locker rooms, and ticket booths, and things of that nature. And so, again, due to situations that arose, they would like to remove that actual building, replace it, and have some type of ticket booth area right over here, leave the plaza area open, again, giving them the option to do events and small events as they had originally proposed. And then over here, by the grandstand, they were looking to propose to have some facilities, bathroom facilities, again, 2,200 square feet, I think, was the approximate size. And it would look something like this, where the facilities are inside, there's a mechanical room, and then there's a ticket booth over on the side over here. I did reach out to the departments to see if there are any comments or any concerns with these particular changes that were proposed. Specifically, fire, because there was that turnaround that was a big issue in the original discussion. That is not being changed whatsoever. So the fire department only had questions in regards to whether or not the building would be sprinkled, and whether or not it met code in terms of smoke and fire prevention. Conservation had stated that they are out of jurisdiction in this portion of the project, so that they had no concerns. GPW said that they had no concerns with the proposed changes. And also, I spoke with the building commissioner, who again, said that as long as they were meeting code, that he would not have any problems with the changes. So I brought it to the board because it was a big part of the project, and I was a little unsure as to whether or not it should be treated as a larger modification to the original site plan, or if it was deemed something administratively that we could put together, whether we add conditions and things of that nature. However, Felipe Schwartz with Merrimack College is here to speak more about the project and more about those changes, and answer any questions that you guys may have.
Okay, great. For the record, Felipe Schwartz, Associate Vice President for Campus Planning and Development at Merrimack College. I don't know what else to say, she summarized it so well. You know, I think, just looking at the building program for the project, we realized how close that building was to our existing, there's a residence hall to the left, on the left side, and when we looked at that a little bit closer as a project is going, we decided, you know, there's a combination of things that we could do outdoors. When we had our groundbreaking ceremony, it was a great groundbreaking ceremony, we had a lot of activity along the street, and we said, why can't we do that within the facility? And so that's kind of what we see in that outdoor plaza area you see there. So that led us to think, okay, maybe we don't need this, we don't need the locker rooms, we don't need the event space, we can do concessions in a bunch of different ways, whether it's food trucks, whether it's a bunch of different ways that we had at groundbreaking. But the bathrooms are really where we're, where we're really want to provide that for the grandstand spectators. In our research of athletic, of similar athletic facilities across the state, the plumbing code requires a vast amount of fixtures to support a grandstand. We were thinking that we would be able to use the athletic center, which is just above this, and the restrooms, we have a slew of restrooms within that facility. But the distance and just where we are in the project, it made more sense to look at how we can provide those facilities, accessible facilities as well, for those that are handicapped adjacent to the grandstand. So that's where we're at. It's a less than, far less than half the original building footprint in terms of square-foot area. Doesn't really change much of anything in terms of access or fire access or things like that. Overall, it provides an opportunity not only to service visitors and spectators on this field, but below this, we have a baseball field, and we have another field as well. So this is actually within closer walking distances for those facilities as well when this one's not in use. So that's really it.
So, I think it's, I wasn't here for the previous hearings, so I think if you have a specific amount of people that you think will, you want to be able to service with these athletic fields?
Yeah.
Okay, and that requires a specific amount of bathrooms?
Yes, exactly. And the times that we would ever have a full grandstand of 2,500 people, I mean, we get about 1,000 people on a good football game. Homecoming's a different animal, you know, we get a lot of people around homecoming, probably for homecoming, might have to add portable restrooms like we do for that type of large event. But for the most part, this would easily serve what we would need, and...
So the change is, this is increasing the bathroom sizes, or the amount of bathrooms?
No, it's just the change is basically reducing the building size and sliding it elsewhere on the site. It's reducing it by more than half. We're going from a 7,500-square-foot building to a 2,200-square-foot building.
So, but I guess I can ask, what was required by the plumbing code? Why was the plumbing code an issue?
Because when we see other facilities, other college facilities that have done this, and we see what the plumbing code allows, when we were looking at this originally, we were thinking we can utilize, we can share those restrooms in the athletic facility to support this. But now, looking at it closer, it's better that we provide these facilities closer to those stations.
So in the square footage that you had before, there wasn't this...
There were, but there weren't this many.
This many, yeah.
Correct.
So, yeah. Because I mean, we're, this is an interesting one, I think, because what we're doing is, we're actually making a decision whether it's an insubstantial change or a material change. And, you know, normally, if it's an increase in size and scope or it adds a building, you say, yes, this is a little bit different, because it's less.
Right.
But the idea is, is it, do we, we have to make a determination, do we lose anything out by not having a formal hearing?
That's, I think that's what I'm trying to get at, so it's not calling for more people or anything like that?
Nope, nope.
Seems to be...
It's further away from the public view, if you will. I mean, this is, this is again, I'm sorry, I don't have a vicinity map, but this is, the athletic center's on top, and then Route 114, I'm sorry, then we have woods, and then Route 114, you wouldn't see this from 114. You know, this building, this facility is four feet lower than our campus roadway at the top of that plant. So in terms of its visibility, its impact, it's far less than what was originally proposed.
Were there a lot, what was the turnout like at the original hearing? Were there no issues?
Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting thing, short of, you know, at Merrimack, short of the new dorms, you know, and the facilities that are right on the front of the campus that you see now, I don't think there's ever been any attendance at any of the Merrimack projects that we've had.
We had one, and you sent them to Andover, because they were...
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, and it's interesting, because the projects that, I don't know what your thoughts are, but the Merrimack projects and the Brooks projects, which are the two sort of private schools we have in the community, tend to be sort of planned with a whole lot of care and attention to them and so forth, that are a little bit different than the residential subdivisions and site plan reviews, I think it's a little bit more careful thought, but.
Pete, do you have any?
I would agree with that. I do just want to ask a couple of questions to follow up on Ethan's question. So, the building is much smaller.
Yep.
The location of the building is further away and less visible.
Yep.
But the piece I just wanted to clarify was, was the restroom facilities. There's a larger number of restroom facilities in the smaller building than had been planned in the original building.
That is correct.
And can you give us some numbers there? The original plan had...
I think the original, I should zoom in, and you can probably count them. I think there were about 12 female facilities, fixtures, and then there were about, gosh, I think when you add the locker rooms, there are probably another, probably another eight or so on the male side.
So 20?
Yeah.
And then the new, the new smaller building?
The new smaller building, we have probably a total of 30, there's 20, what are there, 22, I believe, on the left, and then another, between the urinals and the toilets, that's another 10, so it's about another, it's about 32 fixtures.
Okay. And any other changes in either direction, smaller or bigger? So it's the size of the building, location and visibility of the building, and plumbing?
Yeah, and then we also expand the plaza a little bit, so if you back out to that, to that site plan.
So there will be some drainage changes?
So we had, yeah, exactly, we have some, just some drainage changes in the plaza, but there, that's all within the system that we have.
Can you just help me understand, the plaza is which part of the diagram?
On the lower left-hand corner, that's kind of hatched right there.
This part?
Exactly.
So that got bigger?
That got a little bit bigger because of the, that's part of where the building was.
Right.
But now it becomes an area where we can do a tent, we can throw in a couple of food trucks, we can do some tables and chairs, it becomes a kind of a festive...
And what type of surface is that? What type of surface is the plaza?
What do you mean type of surface?
Is it brick, cement?
Yeah, it'll probably be, it won't be brick, it'll be, it'll be petuminous. It'll be petuminous.
I just have one question. Do you have any long-term plans about adding back the field house?
No.
At this point?
No.
So...
We have, we have a football locker room right now, we have visiting locker room facilities as well. Those are probably the two key parts of this, but the decision was made that it's really this site plan is what we're, what we're after in terms of the restroom facilities and the outdoor plaza area.
Is there any, is there any bond with this, with that?
There is an associated bond with the project.
Is there a request to have that changed, or would the board be interested?
Oh, we can request to reduce it.
No, I'm just asking. That's even though, yes, I'm just...
I mean, I think it's a relatively small bond, because it's, you know, the big bonds we end up with are, when you go to subdivision road or something like that, where you have to bond the construction of the road and the utilities and stuff like that. I bet it's not more than 10 or 15,000.
I think it's 10.
I think it's like 10.
And they seem good for it, but...
Yeah, they're, yeah, I think...
This has to be done by October, like, the whole project is...
I did have one question I forgot to ask you when we did originally speak. Did this go before the Andover Conservation Commission in terms of stormwater?
It doesn't need to, because we're not increasing impurvious area here.
Okay, understood.
It's a net, it's a net neutral.
Understood.
So any, Dan, just, how would you summarize your take away from this?
You know, I worry when someone comes back, especially when they were here three months ago with a site plan, but where they're reducing the size of the building, where it's just kind of changing around and adding a few bathrooms, it seems like less impact. To me, it does seem insubstantial. You know, and the fact that there were no other neighbor issues, that doesn't really, for me, factor into whether it's insubstantial or not. But I think where the idea and the purpose is, do we need another full hearing? I think my questions have been answered, and I think it really is a small change in the grand scheme of the project, and is a lessening of any kind of burdens or things that we would worry about. I'd be comfortable that this is an insubstantial change.
Any other...
Agree there?
I agree as well.
Okay, good. Then what I think we ought to do is, we'd have to take a vote to recommend that this is an insubstantial change, and direct the planner to write a note for the files that explains why, because I think your logic, that's the really important thing, is we're not going to give them every time, we're going to give them for a set of reasons. And then also, anything that we might need to get from them, like you talked about drainage or something like that, just make sure we get that in for the record, so. Would you like to make, Ethan, a motion of that effect?
Sure, so I would make a motion to consider to agree or adopt the request that this, that the proposal being proposed by Merrimack College... the proposal being proposed by Merrimack College, in amending their April 18, 2017 site plan review special permit be deemed insubstantial, and the planner be directed to make a note to the file indicating as such, and, as well as to indicate any changes that are made in terms of drainage, things of that nature be included in the file?
Good. Okay, excellent. Peter, a second?
Second.
Motion made a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For moving it.
Yeah. Okay. Back to the top, Stevens Street.
Yes.
So, at the last meeting, we asked, or we continued this specific issue, because the Conservation Commission, which the applicant is filed an NOI with a notice of intent to build upon these two particular lots, had not yet got a chance to hear the actual proposal. So, we had asked that we continue to the next meeting, so that they got a chance to at least open the hearing, so we could hear if the Conservation Commission had any concerns. At that time, I had misspoke in terms of my timeline. I had mentioned that there were 30 days. There are actually only 21 days to approve an ANR since the date that it is timestamped. So, we had overpassed our timeline. However, the applicant, after having spoken to him, was more than generous enough to write an, or ask for an extension to this particular meeting. So, we will need to be making a decision on this matter tonight at this meeting, because the clock has already surpassed.
Right. And you'll, as you said, you'll never forget the dates of this one.
I will never forget the 21 day ever again, for as long as I live. But yes, the Conservation Commission was unable to open the hearing last week due to the lack of a forum, so they, we were not able to get any more feedback from them.
So, again, go ahead, Pete.
So, I'm in the butter. And at the last meeting, I recused myself, so I think I ought to recuse again.
Okay, good, okay.
Thank you.
So, just, just so we have all the facts here, can you tell us the size of each of the lots, and, and what variance conditions or any other circumstances exist here that enable these to be buildable lots?
So, they received a variance specifically that for the contiguous buildable area for Lot 1 and Lot 2, which is supposed to be 75% of upland area. And then they had also received other variances in terms of side setbacks and things of that nature. However, in terms of what the planning board looks at, the frontage was suitable, the acreage was suitable. The only issue that we would have had in terms of, of granting an ANR was the contiguous buildable area, which they in fact did get a variance for. So, they have met all their requirements.
Is this R3 or R4?
Um, this is, I believe, in R3, R3. Yes, in R3. So, 150 feet of frontage.
Right. So, they did get a variance for Lot 1 for size, right?
For the size, yes, I'm sorry. For the lot coverage.
Yeah, the, uh, right, if, yeah. Because on Lot 2, if the wetland bisected the lot the way it did, they probably don't have the contiguous buildable area.
That's correct. So, I was going by public safety, public way, contiguous buildable area, lot frontage.
But it is, yeah, okay. So, does anybody have any questions on this? I mean, it's, this is pretty much of a no-brainer, actually, given that they do have these variances. So, if there's no questions, because we don't typically, we haven't traditionally voted on these form A's, but we just make a motion to direct the planner to sign off on the Form A as is conforming, unless anybody sees anything in there that's not conforming. So, you know, I, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but if somebody can make a motion to that effect, to direct the planner to sign off on the Form A?
I'll make a motion to have the planner sign off on the Form A for the, the lot at 271 Stevens Street.
Okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I had noticed that the, Peter recuses himself here, so, Jerry Brecker, I know him. Okay, uh, 1 to 1975 Salem Street.
1975 Salem Street has asked to continue until the July 25 meeting.
Okay, good. Okay, so that means we're on to 175 Salem Street.
So, at the last, oh, sorry, this is an application for a watershed special permit. The applicant proposes to construct a 576 square foot garage and small extension of existing paved driveway in the non-discharge zone. The applicant's engineer, since our last meeting, has updated the plans to reflect the comments of the stormwater consultant, TEC, and I have drafted a decision for your review as requested, if you'd like to proceed.
Okay. And there's nothing else we need in terms of answers to questions?
No, there is nothing else outstanding.
Okay.
There was a question when Lynn Rudnicki was on the board in regards to snow storage. So, I did talk with the engineer, Jack Sullivan, about that, and he had mentioned putting a spot and a condition that there would be no snow pushed over the 100-foot buffer zone.
Okay, okay, good. So, can somebody make a motion to close the public hearing for this watershed special permit for 175 Salem Street?
I make a motion to close the hearing, the public hearing for the watershed permit for 175 Salem Street.
Okay, motion made and...
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Let's go through the decision here. Everybody, so, would somebody like to make a motion on this?
I'd make a motion to approve the findings of fact as presented and the conditions as presented.
Okay. So, motion to approve the watershed special permit for 175 with approved conditions?
The watershed district special permit for 175 Salem Street.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, so, the only thing left we have is Beechwood?
That's correct.
Okay. So, what's the story on that one?
Um, Beechwood is a little bit more of a complicated issue. You were actually sitting on the board at the time, and I'm not sure if you recall. So, on May 27, 1994, the planning board approved a three-lot definitive subdivision on Beechwood Drive, and I'll pull that up so that you can see exactly where I'm talking about.
This is a commercial subdivision.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So, here's the locus right here. 1600 Osgood is over here, 125 is right here, and then the subdivision in question is right over here. So, it's actually the subdivision, the commercial subdivision right across from 1600 Osgood building.
Right.
So, according to the decision, one of the requirements stated that prior to any lots being released from the statutory covenant, that the applicant must present a site plan review for the individual lot. On August 27, 1996, the planning board approved a site plan review special permit for Lot 2, which is the lot that's highlighted right here. That used to be the Elcom building. It was a 30,000 square foot, one-story building, and was released after it had been approved. Then later on, on, on October 29 of 1996, the planning board approved a Form A to give Lot 2 a portion of Lot 1 in order to expand their parking lot. And you can actually see the lines have not shifted, so the database has not been updated. But this is the parking lot right here. And I can show you the Form A that was approved, that actually split that lot, so you can see exactly how much more was given to Lot 2. And Lot 1 has approximately three acres now, instead of what it originally had, with the old lot line being right over here. So, they had done, the planning board had approved that project and approved the ANRs to do that project. The street was then later accepted in May 11 of 1998 at town meeting. So, now the owners are in a little bit of a jam, because they have Lot 1 and Lot 3, and they have both not been released from the statutory covenants. However, when you look at Lot 3, which is over here where the cursor is, if you can see, those buildings were on the lot when the subdivision was created, and therefore not anticipated to be part of the covenant placed on the subdivision. However, for some reason, it was placed under covenant. And then for Lot 1, they had the covenant on it, and they had not presented a site plan review. The owners would like to sell the property, and therefore cannot sell the property without the release of the statutory covenant. I have had conversations with the owner's attorney, attorney Belander, who's here to represent his client, as well as town council, in order to see exactly how this kind of situation could be rectified. It was recommended that maybe an insubstantial change occur, or a modification to the original decision to amend that condition, and to allow them to move forward with a Form J to release those lots from the statutory covenant.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I mean, normally, we do it in that sequence, because the expectation is that they're all going to be built within a reasonable period of time while the road is being built. And what we didn't want to do was to have it released from the covenant before all of the physical infrastructure was, was in place. So, I think it's reasonable under normal, perhaps in hindsight, we shouldn't phrase the condition quite the way we did it. But, Ethan, this is, for you two, this is right up your alley.
Well, I, so, I have trouble with this one, because this one, and I'd love to hear from the attorney itself, but I have trouble with this one for a couple of reasons. This is where Merrimack came back three months later. I'm like, oh, that's kind of weird, you were just here. This is 20 years later, and to change something 20 years later, to me, does not seem insubstantial. To release covenants does not, to me, seem insubstantial, just on the face of it. I mean, I'd like to hear, I guess, if for Lot 3, why was it in the covenant in the first place? If we don't, you probably don't know the answer...
You don't have a good answer for that.
Right. And so, that's, and so to me, that's, that's not troubling in that you did anything wrong. But to say that this is now insubstantial, I don't, unless, unless someone recalls or has minutes from that and says why it was done, it's hard for me to say that this is a insubstantial change.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the normal practice is, well, you know, I mean, what the drill is, is that you, you hold the lot as your security that the roadway gets built.
Right.
Now, what I think ended up here is what should have happened, and I'm surprised the owner didn't do this 10 years ago, was once the roadway got built and the roadway got accepted, there's no need to hold the lot anymore, because our whole reason for holding it is to secure the building of the road. So, you know, the question is, how do we end up doing it? Whether an insubstantial change is the right way to do it?
That's, I mean, I, I think it seems to very much make sense to do that. I just question, it seems like we're trying to fit a, you know, to not to be too cliché, but the, you know, square peg into the round hole, or vice versa. It seems like insubstantial change is not the way to go. It may be, it may take more time to do a, you know, a formal modification, or some sort of other, I'm not exactly sure, having just kind of looked at this, what the other legal aspects or other ways to be. Have you considered any other options, just a formal, formal modification?
Well, Lot 2 was released at the time that the site plan special permit was granted. I, I tend to believe, although I can't say with any certainty, that it should have just been Lot 2A, because of the revised plan. That didn't come to light until the title search was done on the property this past year for the sale. Lot 1A, or Lot 1, now 1A, is still subject to site plan review by this board.
Right.
Regardless of whether it's released from the old covenant. Basically, we believe everything that was attempted to be accomplished by the covenant has been accomplished, and the town still has adequate protection. Lot 3 and Lot 2A are fully built out. They can't be changed. Lot 1 will have to come, or 1A will have to come before this board, prior to any construction happening on it anyway. And at this point, there's no plans to do anything on it right now. So, we would thought this was, and again, talking with Rebecca and town council, felt this was the best way to accomplish this, to clean up something that, you're right, should have been done 20 years ago, but the property's been in the family, and nobody has ever looked at the title work.
So, what, what exactly is the change, then, to the...
Releasing Lots 1A and Lot 1 and 3 from the covenant, because again, Lot 2 has already been released.
Well, how is your, I mean, is your timing imminent? If, if we said to you, let's file a formal application to modify, we'll bring it up, we'll approve it one night, we'll waive all fees, but we'll go through a formal process. So, that might take another three or four weeks. Are you okay with that? I mean, given we've had all this time...
It's at the board's discretion, obviously. The property has been sold. There's been money held in escrow for the release of, basically, it's the release of the parking lot is all they care about.
Yeah.
One section that was not released under Lot 2.
Yeah. I mean, I think you did, I, I agree with you. I think the cleaner way to do it is to formal, to do a modification, change the condition, and be done with it that way. And we'll try to do it as fast as we possibly can. Yeah. Because I, I mean, you know, yeah, under nor, under normal circumstances, this wouldn't have been released here. If you had asked for it five years ago, we would have, we would have done.
Well, it should have been asked for 21 years ago.
Right, yeah.
Again, nobody knows.
Yeah. So, if we could just, just wait a tiny bit longer, we'll do it the way I think is the cleanest way. I agree with you, yeah.
I'll be back.
Good, great, thank you. Anything else?
Just the minutes, and that would be it.
Okay. Before we go, I did want to bring up one topic. I hate to break the topic at the end of the meeting, because it's actually a significant and it's an important topic. As everybody knows, the big topic at town meeting this past year was the marijuana article that did... The reason why the planning board, you know, was opposed to the article in the end was that there was insufficient time to do the due diligence and analysis, but I said that at that time, we wanted to do it, we wanted to engage them, and we wanted to start the dialogue. So I said, that's what I said to the individual that I talked to, and I wanted to let everybody know I did that, and I suggested possibly they come to the next planning board meeting. I said, if we do anything, I want the process to be super open, super transparent, super observable to everybody in the town, because if we're going to come up with something that everybody agrees on, it's got to be done openly. It can't be any perception that it's done behind closed doors and back rooms. So that's what I suggested. So I just wanted to let everybody know, but I also sort of wanted to get everybody's opinion of how we should best go through it. I know we haven't really talked about it formally, but, you know, how do people feel we should address this issue? It's possible that it may come up this fall, it's possible it could be in the spring, I mean, I don't know, but definitely, it has not gone away, so we do have to deal with it, so.
Don't they need a new plan? Don't they have to come up with a separate and distinct plan from what was presented at town meeting in order for it to be heard?
Well, yes and no, we have, the planning board can change its mind.
I just, Andrew Mailer had sent out a memo about, and that's what I?
That memo, yeah, the memo, it's a little bit ambiguous, you know, but I think there's some wiggle room that if there's any kind of reasonable changes in it, the planning board could vote to change its mind, and then it could be heard in less than two years. So.
Can I ask, who initiated that call? Did you, did they call you or?
He called me, he called me, yeah.
And he was a little fuzzy on timeline as to when he wanted?
I have heard through the grapevine that they're considering something in the fall, but they haven't started the process forward on it. I mean, I think one of the things that if you, again, and I'll draw some analogies to other projects that we've done in the past, and the due diligence that we've done in the past, to give you some context, is when we did the original continuing care retirement thing, which is where Edgewood is, it was probably a year and a half to two years' worth of review research. We hired a consultant, we had them come in many times, they explained what they were trying to do, we looked at mock-ups, showed it to other boards, it took an extremely long period of time. Another example of a similar thing is the commercial project where Burton's, I always forget the name of it, but that was zoned, it had a different zoning, and the zoning actually had to change. And we spent the better part of the year working with the applicant, we wanted to, without doing site plan review in advance, we wanted to see what kind of project they were going to build, what kinds of uses they were going to exclude and so forth, and we didn't change the zoning until they actually, you know, restricted certain uses away, so it took a long period of time. In this case, if we start to ask them some questions, like, for example, how are you going to handle water usage, they're going to have to do more work than they did the last time, and they know that, that they're going to have to put more research, they're going to have to potentially hire some engineers. I think they're willing to do that, but part of the reason why I want to have a conversation in the open is to have that out about how far they're willing to go, you know, I don't want to push them to do things we wouldn't expect anybody else to do, but I would expect them to do the things that we would expect other people to do in answers to reasonable questions that we had and so forth. So that's, you know, what I like to have, and it may, we may decide that that's the kind of thing we can do with three months, or it's the kind of thing that it's going to take us nine months to do, but that's why we want to have an open, frank discussion, or similar almost to the discussion we had tonight, so.
I mean, I very much agree about that. I do think we need to, you know, post that and make it known that we're going to have that discussion, not that it's going to be an open forum for the community necessarily, not at first, there will be times for that.
Yeah.
Certainly, eventually. But I also think that it should be in conjunction with the discussion on retail marijuana. I just think that those are so intertwined, at least in my mind, if we're going to be zoning either yes or no for different retail establishments and where medical can become retail, where there are correlations between places where you have medical, you can't necessarily forbid retail and recreational, I should say, not necessarily retail, but other aspects. I think we should also hear from planning and from, you know, whoever's working on it as well.
Yeah, I mean, we should invite town council, I think, to come, if she can come to the next meeting.
For the July 25th meeting?
July 25th meeting, yeah.
I just think it should, at least to start, be as broad as possible, and then we can drill down into these different things, but, I mean, to me, those two things are, and now, because of the law, well, we'll see what happens on Beacon Hill in the next month or so, see how it changes, but they're so intertwined that it's hard now to talk about one, where five years ago, you could have talked just about medical and zoning and overlay districts for that. Now, I don't think you can talk about one without at least talking about the other. You can take different actions, or take action on one and not the other, or take them together, but I think they need to be discussed together.
Yeah.
I think as a newer member to the board who was not here when the initial discussions happened, for me, and maybe Rebecca, this is an offline discussion, it would be helpful if I could see the minutes from the meetings?
Of course.
Of the discussions before.
Of course.
And I think it's important, having been at town meeting and having seen the community engagement on this issue, that we do make sure to publicize these meetings well, but I think it's also important that we take it seriously and be thoughtful about it from perhaps right now, and think about sort of what are the issues that we're going to want addressed, what were the big issues that weren't addressed before, what do we think, such as the retail issue, that might be another issue that we want to address, and I think we need to move very deliberately, but also keep in mind that there is, there are strong feelings in the community both ways. It was such a close vote at town meeting that I think we have to recognize that there's some interest in us addressing the issues, but not necessarily dragging our feet and making it a two-year process if it could be a six-month. And that's why I suggest that we start thinking about this, if we know it's going to come back to us in a couple of months, maybe we can start the process deliberating about what it is that we think is going to be important, and that way, you know, we're not perhaps a reason for this to drag out or become unnecessary.
Oh, yeah, that's, you want to get in front of it.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, so.
So from your conversation, did you get a sense if the group was going to change tact at all? From the discussions in the spring, it was solely a zoning issue, and I think people interpreted the vote in their own ways, but it was really a vote on zoning changes to the bylaw. Is that the approach that they're going to come to us with, is to work with the bylaw, but also try to get our thoughts and continued feedback on their, the development specifically?
I mean, I think answers both. I mean, I picked up a willingness to be open with us and listen to all of our questions and try to respond to our questions. I mean, they realize that, you know, the community sentiment, there's some people that are adamantly against it, there's some people that are for it, and there's people all stages in between, but they realize they have to do a better job explaining it. I do think the basic concept of this world-class both production and research facility is still the notion that's going on in their heads. That's the model, whether that'll change or evolve, you know, I don't know, and I don't know if it requires any zoning, but that's part of the reason why, I don't think we ever really got a good chance to have a really in-depth discussion about that. If you think about it, we never even got a chance to take a tour of the facility and to have them explain where they would put it and how they would set up the system to manage everything inside. So it's like a lot of things like that, basic information that would be really good to have, we didn't have, and I think they're willing to do that, so, which I think is a good thing.
John, can I have, because I don't see it, I'll sit down to hear. I mean, if you're going to be making sure that these meetings are known by the public, do you allow public comment? I mean, so if like, you know, you say, we're going to have a discussion, and you have 35, 50, who knows how many people show up, how would you handle that public comment?
Well, I think what we would, the way we do it, the way we normally do it, is we sort of let the applicant speak.
Sure, sure.
Board asks questions, and when they're done, we turn and say, audience, have at it.
So that's normal practice?
Yeah, that's the normal practice that we follow, so.
That could be?
Assuming we have multiple meetings, there may be some meetings, I defer to the chair, but there may be some, I've seen, there's some meetings where there isn't public comment, it's just more informational, the board, and the next one set up with public comment, where, you know, I think people should know in advance.
Yeah, well, that's, that's my point, I mean.
Well, it's a little bit, yeah.
My background is from the school committee.
The number one rule thumb you have in these things, if you have a meeting, the first time you publicize it, lots of people go and then it drifts away. So you want to try to manage that in a way that, you know, you might want public feedback the second or third time, but you're right, maybe you just don't do it every time.
You just have to, just as long as the public knows this is the meeting that they are allowed to speak?
Yeah.
You know, and maybe you hold it in the auditorium, or this is a meeting that you are welcome to attend, but comments will be at the next meeting, you know, something like that.
Yes, that's, that's fine.
Because it could, it could get, I just know from redistricting, all right, huge topic within the schools, and you get just an enormous amount of people in front of you, and almost like you couldn't function as a committee holding a meeting.
Yeah.
So that's all, just preparation in case it happens, it might not happen, but.
Yeah, I mean.
It could.
Believe it or not, the most people that ever came in my time in the planning board, the planning board meeting, was when they were going to put the scrubbers on the GLSD, and a lot of people came because they said, oh, this is a way to close the plant down.
Right.
And, or it wasn't the GLSD, it was the?
Relerator?
Yeah, the, yeah, the waste treatment plant, yeah, the waste treatment plant. And we, I think we met in the senior center, and we had about 100 people, that was the most I've ever seen, so, but, yeah, maybe, I mean, if that's what it comes to, that's what it comes to, so, yeah, but, so good, so we'll, now, I think also, Rebecca, some of the things that I think we want to do is, you know, stay on top of what's going on at the state level, find out what other, you know, I don't know what, like, the whole planning board listserv or whatever is, you know, what they're saying, what's happening, if there's towns that, you know, have best practices, remember, consider some of that, you know, I mean, given the place that there is, the town that, what is it, what's the name?
Fairhaven?
It's not Fairhaven, but it's next to Fairhaven.
Between New Bedford and?
Fairhaven, it's close to Fairhaven, it begins with an F, too, but they apparently approved a million-square-foot facility, so we may want to get their bylaw, we may want to even talk to the people in that town, find out what kind of process they went through, what they learned, I mean.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I mean, if they've learned things that we think are relevant, why shouldn't we take advantage of them?
Yeah, yeah, so.
I definitely want to research and get as much information as I possibly can.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, so, good.
Sounds good, so the next meeting, I'll add it to the agenda?
Yeah, I'll add it, and I'll talk to them and let them know.
And I'll invite town council, and if there's any other additional information that anybody else would like me to gather, please feel free to send me an email, and I will do the best I can.
Yeah, so, good, right, excellent. Okay, so we have a minute, and we have to have a new czar of minutes here. So, I don't know, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the last minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 20, 2017 meeting.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.